For round three tonight. Yeah, as we've been talking about, it seems like our facility planning and mitigation strategy isn't, isn't a cyclical thing anymore. It almost seems to be an ongoing process as we continue to grow enrollment and hit pinch with space. So we wanted to get, we needed to get kind of a preliminary analysis of what we see 2016, 17, and beyond looking like in front of the board. And there's a couple of main purposes why this timing is critical. One has to do with whatever mitigation strategy we move on for next year. If it involves portables, given where the greater world is in the demand for portables, we need to get orders in sooner rather than later to be able to assure that we can take delivery of them and get that cited and placed prior to the start of 2016, 17 school year. And the other issue is the legislature moving up the implementation of universal full day kindergarten by year to 2016, 17, which creates further demands on classroom space. So we've kind of laid that out and are going to present that sort of what that looks like. Obviously, there's lots of caveats around that when you're this far away from the start of the 16, 17 school year, but trying to be as thoughtful as we can, as complete as we can about, one, how we believe our enrollment overall is going to continue to grow. And then two, with the overlay of what full day kindergarten district wide would look like. And then three, kind of how that all changes then in 2017, 18 as we implement grade reconfiguration and boundary adjustment. So it's a pretty complex picture, but one, we need to start talking about in earnest. Kindergarten registration begins in January. And so we need to have some clarity about what we're doing or what we may not be able to do between now and then.
Yeah, communication typically we do our communications somewhere in November.
There are some, some high level policy as well as some equity considerations that probably going to need some time to chew around.
So, so thank you guys. We'll try to be quick. I apologize. I took my shoes off because my feet was hurting. I'll go three days as fast as I can. So I want to thank Mike and Karen and Doug because they've done an excellent job when the legislative made the change around implementing full day K a year earlier. We kind of circled the way that it said, what is this going to do to us from a facility standpoint? We knew that we were already short classrooms. Just kind of take a 5,000 foot level and sort of see what this impact will apply. So the first slide that we wanted to share with you is a little bit of some history as you look back to 2006 and looking forward to 2026. You know, the significance on here is that as we develop facilities, it's really all tied to our bond cycles. And our bond cycles are four-year cycles. We typically do some type of planning two years prior to that. So if you look at the bond cycle, it's really a six-year cycle of planning. Typically, we typically do your construction. And so we tried to list our bond cycles out there. And as you can see, we, there's no numbers as we move on 2018 and 2019. The other thing that we want to show with you is the planning around property acquisition. So as you can see, as we started growing, we knew we had to start looking at purchasing property up in the future and giving the district the most flexibility to continue to build X out at that site as we try to adjust growth. The construction cycle, that's always, even though we go through and purchase the property and secure the finances, it's still about a 24 to 36 month construction cycle. So we can't just pop up classrooms or four-part classrooms that quickly. We have to really go through the planning process. The other thing that I think is significant on here is if you take a look at the boundary changes, we already made a boundary change, I believe, for somebody who'd been here that long in 2007. What's significant about the boundary change that Karen and I found is we're looking at our capital facility plan and we assumed in our capital facility plan that we would hit this mark in 2012.
That we would need another boundary change in 12.
In 2012. What we lucked out on is the economy dip and we can see that with our student enrollment.
So when they, I'm sorry, when the economy dipped, a thousand students left this area?
No, we were, we were demographically in a declining enrollment trend, but the-
Why? With all the houses?
Just the-
There's a lot of-
There's a lot of higher selling.
One thing, that whole area has been since 2007.
But the, it was the north end of the district that was still a growth area of the district, even in an overall declining enrollment trend. The north end was still continuing to grow. But once the economy tanked, all construction stopped.
All construction stops, yes.
And we were graduating more students than we getting in.
Yes, correct. So the other significance is if you look at the number of portables we have at our elementary level, you can see since 2006, it really significantly has grown, especially the last three to four years. We put in about 40 portables new and used to accommodate the need at the, at the, just at the elementary level. And then the last thing that we usually try to, you know, as we go through this facility planning is there's always changes at the legislative level. So for example, as Larry mentioned, in 2018, 17 was the year that full day K was supposed to be implemented. And as a result of that, they're implementing that a year earlier, which impacts our space the year earlier. So instead of having space in 2017, when we made our grade reconfiguration change, we're really now ramping that up with all six grades and the full day impact students.
At the same time, we're projecting an overall enrollment growth of over 300. At the elementary level, so just more with then full day K on top of that.
So this kind of gives a snapshot of what we had done in the last 10 years and hopefully what we are planning to do the next.
So is full day K acquired in 2016 for all schools?
No, it's not. So-
That's where I'm going to use.
Yeah, it's, the, the funding for all schools is available in 2016, 17. You don't have to accept the funding. And you can accept the funding on a school by school basis. But if you accept funding for full day kindergarten at a school, you have to offer full day kindergarten to 100% of the students at the school. So at most of our schools now, we have a hybrid of full day kindergarten or half, and half day kindergarten. You couldn't maintain that same hybrid and take state funding for the full day sections.
What if some parents want half day?
You have to offer the option for half day kindergarten, but you have to, your baseline has to be an offer of full day kindergarten for all students. And depending on what the demand would be for half day kindergarten, we don't think it would be great. It likely wouldn't be enough students to run, say, a whole section of half day kindergarten. Now, you might be able to perhaps consolidate students from multiple schools for a section of half day kindergarten. There's issues with that. More likely what we would do is you would-
Before you've been doing that though, right?
Uh, in-
For full day? I mean, I'm sorry, for, for half day and full day across the district?
Across the district, yes. We've been doing some of that. What you would likely do is put everybody in a full day section and then students who only want a half day would leave at the middle of the day or arrive at, or arrive at the middle of the day.
That's done in other districts. And it takes a lot of teacher training around offering the core content in the AM only. So kids come, they get literacy math, they don't get music PE lunch because those happen in the afternoon and then the afternoon is an extension of that. It's not unheard of in many districts.
So great segue. The next slide really shows you, and we went through the exercise of what if we had to, or we were interested in applying full day K to district wide to all of our schools. And so what we took is the current full day kindergarten enrollment. We rolled their numbers up to 2016. We add up, sprinkle a little bit of growth on there and voila, this is what we get. What we're, what we believe today is we're about 41 classrooms short just to implement full day K in 2016 district wide.
And that 41 includes full day K and projected enrollment.
And projected enrollment.
How do we have nine open at Frank Love?
It's all the portables that we need to-
These are all the kids at their homeschools. So these are, this is before we account for any-
Any, any movements or changes.
This is just every school's population, yes.
And as we thought, it's, a lot of them is Union North End. So Coconee, Canyon Creek, Fernwood, Crystal Springs. You make up about half of the classrooms. You got to get short in that area. And we've known this for some time now as we've been trying to work on some short-term, midterm mitigation. Okay, so this is kind of the framework of that. So great, another great segue. What happens if we start trying to modify and move programs around to various schools? Can we still accommodate full day K at all of our schools? The answer is no. So if we were to continue to move programs, Crystal Springs to Frank Love, Coconee to Maywood Hills, eliminate some daycare to capture additional classroom space, eliminate portable, eliminate computer labs, at the end of the day, we're still about between little over 20 classrooms short. Now remember, this is a net. And the reason we say it's a net is because we have space in East Ridge. We're just not sure if we're going to send anybody to East Ridge.
It'll take them all day.
Okay, so one of the things that we tried to summarize for you on the bottom is the schools in red, the schools in red are the schools that we know we can't accommodate full day K at those sites. So as you can see Canyon Creek, even though we try to finagle everything that we can out there, we're still going to be about four classrooms short at Canyon Creek. We know that Fernwood will be short. We know that Coconee will be short. We know that Morland, Shelton View would be short. West Hill would more would be short.
Now, is it mandated in 2017 that we have to do it?
It, it, there's a question about that. You can read the law to say that it, it is required in 2017, 18. You have to add that where? I, I don't know how school districts are going to meet that requirement. I mean, we're not unique in our space challenges. Everett Lake, Washington's, or some of our peer neighboring districts are in very similar situations. So that's, right now, I would say you would read the law. I think it would say you have to have it in 17, 18. And I think we can get there in 17, 18, particularly with grade reconfiguration and the opening of Northern Creek. But I, I don't know districts that aren't kind of on a trajectory that we're on. I don't know how they'd get there from here.
What if, in the primary center?
Yeah.
That doesn't cover 21, we're going to say.
Perfect. We'll, we'll get the comment of it. Ryan, want to talk about 17, 18?
Yep, yep. So the significance on this is whatever we do in 2016 of creating additional space, we create additional capacity above and beyond 31 classrooms once we do the grade reconfiguration. So the grade reconfiguration, and remember, as we were going through the planning, we thought, all right, this is perfect because once we do grade reconfiguration, we can implement full day K with the extra capacity that we have. Because the state moved this up a year earlier, whatever we do in 2016 to create additional space capacity there, if it's added portables, if it's moving daycares out, if it's converting computer labs, we'll only create that number into a higher, a higher number for capacity space.
So we would be way under in 16 and way over in 17. So we would have done all kinds of channigans, right, for short term. And then the next year, we'd ask the YMCA to come back. We'd put the computers back in the lab. We'd say, gee, it's okay. We don't need these portables, all that.
But the, the point about our projection for 17, 18 is if you look at that, so we have a couple of schools, Arrowhead-
East Ridge.
East Ridge ironically, and, and Shelton View, where, where we may have, you know, we may have some challenges or, or need to look at a little bit of reassignment. I mean, obviously you've got East Ridge, Bear Creek, you know, those, those kinds of things. But those are pretty manageable. Those are some pretty manageable challenges. I don't see those as insurmountable obstacles for us to be able to get to full day kindergarten system-wide in 17, 18.
Wait, why is East Ridge?
Because the boundaries of the moves are-
A chunk of Bear Creek over there.
Good. Is that, now we're balancing all those out.
So any questions on this? I mean, this is really just a snapshot 5,000 foot level. This is our best guess. Now again, this is purely from a facilities perspective. We haven't had the discussion with instruction about impacts and all of those type of things. It was just a, let's take a, you know, wild guess from a facility, you know, support services.
Not a wild guess.
Not a wild guess. Educated, educated guess.
And there are some serious considerations around the requirements of the law for all day K with professional development, as well as required home visits, required assessments. Teachers have to have two full days of training before they can start school. All families have to be visited at home or at school before school starts. There, there's a new law, kids assessment. We have to offer foreign language though. That's all been in the new law.
Wait, we have to offer foreign language?
Yes, in kindergarten. So there's a lot, it, you know, I just want to get that in. There's ramping up to do around the instructional side. If we're going to go there, we'd have to get some teachers pretty well prepared for that.
So the other, the other thing I would just want to point out is if you look at the, the schools in red and green, there are some pretty, with the exception of Kenmore and Wooden that are our two highest poverty schools that fell under the full day kindergarten umbrella this year, there are some pretty noticeable demographic differences between the red and green schools that I think just for the rest of our conversation, I think you want to just be paying attention.
But we're already implementing full day K in a couple of our schools.
Wouldn't any kindergarten-
So we are seeing how that's, how it's playing out right now. We, we still have to do all these things that were in Kenmore. Yeah.
Yeah, we just have to do it in a larger scale.
We have to do it in a larger scale.
So we thought we'd show you a map version of this, the kind of the net. You know, if you remove Crystal Springs, you're moving in full day K, some first graders. Coconee would be moving there by full day K. You would still be short, as you can see in your map, you would still be short, little over 20 classrooms. That's assuming again, we can maximize using East Ridge down on the furthest east of our school. So if we don't maximize those three classrooms, that number goes up to 24, et cetera, et cetera. All right? So let us share a little bit of the current sort of hybrid model that we're using today in 2015. So we did the same exercise, applied the same logic from the number of kindergarten students, a little bit of roll up of our students and then sprinkle a little bit of growth on top of that. Before any shifts, we're about 28 classrooms short. It is kind of our best projection, you know, today. If we apply the same logic of any modifications, so modifications, moving students around, programs, adding a little bit of, eliminate a computer lab, et cetera, et cetera, at the end of the day, we're net minus one. Again, that assumes-
In the model we're in right now.
In the model that we're in right, it's, it's a hybrid model. It's a real similar model. We'll show you the differences of the, of some of the changes that we have. So the model that we're recommending today would require us to minimize some full day K at some of our north end schools. What that means is if you're offering two or three full day sessions, we may say you can only, three sessions, you can only offer two full day sessions. The other sessions have to be half day sessions.
And this is the first time we've seen the primary center popping up.
Yes.
We're seeing what?
Yes.
Primary center housing.
On top of this, we're also using the primary center. Six, six classroom, uh, excuse me, six classrooms, 12 sessions.
Are those classrooms ready?
I was just going to ask that question.
Like now?
Well, they could be. I mean, they're, they're ready for us. Right, absolutely.
And legally, we can use them?
Only for half day because we don't have a kitchen and they have to have windows and they don't have either one of those.
But I mean, with East Lake?
Yes.
Yeah, that part's-
Not changing now?
Yeah. What's significant about this, if you take a look again, the schools in red, Canyon Creek, even though we show a net one, we know that that's utilizing all of just schools in the eastern part. And if we don't, then we still have Canyon Creek that we have some challenges that we'll have to figure out how to create one more space. Morland's, how do we create two more spaces? Shelton View, how do we create three more spaces? And where the more, how do we create one space there?
But you can also see the, the column that says possible portable. So in the case of Morland's, although we show them short two classrooms next year, we also believe we can place two more portables there next year.
What about Shelton View?
Shelton View, we'll have to take a look at-
We can add those three portables at Kenmore's right next door. So you could actually send, send those classrooms there.
Okay. So, and we'll show you a summary case that might be a little bit more clear than this. Again, this is just a map view. These are the schools that will be moving. Crystal Springs to Frank Love, West Hill to Kenmore, Coconee to Maywood Hills, Coconee to MPC, Fernwood to MPC, Canyon Creek to MPC.
So all the half day for Coconee, Fernwood, and Chris Canyon Creek would be at the primary center?
Yes.
Correct.
In that one?
And then Coconee's full day and some of their first graders would be to go to Maywood Hills.
And it's, it's possible that some of those first graders are there right now.
At where?
Some of the first graders from Coconee are taking their back day but now in kindergarten. So they would be staying.
Just saying that.
Again, 5,000 foot level, first blush, this is kind of what we're doing. Right, just to see how close we can get to the magic number of zero.
The same confederate there then.
Well, and it's-
That's what she said, yeah.
And I-
That's what she's, that's what we're doing.
And I would just point out that looking at that, Crystal Springs is in the same situation of next year. We believe kindergarten doesn't alone solve it. We would need to pull first graders up to Frank Love as well. And so you might know right now, Chris, Frank Love has Crystal Springs and Canyon Creek. So Canyon, you know, with, with the needs of Crystal Springs and Frank Love, there's no room for Canyon Creek there anymore. Or Shelton View certainly has a one full day section.
So is there a way to have perhaps some of the boundary changes kiddos that are moving from Sacred Springs to-
Yeah, that's something that we talked about on Monday was how do we minimize the transitions? Can we keep the kids who are there earlier? And so we've talked about that. We haven't identified them. And that's part of the discussion that we need to circle around.
And I'm just going to remind everybody, it won't take you long to figure out where I'm coming down with this. I'm just going to remind everyone that what Ryan said earlier about if we were to do all this and you're just beginning to imagine the political ramifications. So I not only don't get full day, I have to take half day and I have to do it at primary center and there isn't a playground and there's no window, you know, all of that stuff, we have to buy portables. So we would do all that, have the system in giant churn for a full year and, and not need it the next year.
And that's the best plan?
Well, the best plan, that's an A plan.
That's a-
Yeah, so let us see if we can, let us see if we can summarize this for you. So we tried to create a summary sheet for you that kind of shares a little bit of what we're currently offering in 2015 with the full day K. What the impacts would be if you did a 2016 full day K versus a 2016 hybrid and what happens at 2017. So as you can see, if you just look at classrooms available, classrooms required for your programs, this year we were short 27 classrooms. If you implement the full day K in 2016, you're short 41. If you implement some hybrid, you're short eight, 28. If you implement the program modifications that we talked about where kindergarten, first grade, everybody moves around, you then become, you get a net of one in 2015 of what we had to this year, net of 21 with the full day K, net of one potentially with your hybrid that you have. Yes, in the negative. Then we talked about portable options. If you overlay your portable options on there, like we did in 2015, we purchased seven new portables to address some of the needs because we were, we couldn't utilize East Ridge as the classroom to fill the space, similar to 16 for full day and your hybrid. At the end of the day, we're still short nine classrooms after utilizing every option that we have out there to implement full day K.
Buying extra portable-
Buying extra portables, kicking people out, converting anything into a classrooms. We're still short at the end of the day to implement full day K, by about nine classrooms.
So what does it look like if we just do what we're doing right now?
It looks like something like the 2016 hybrid.
Although that looks more complicated, I mean, not that what we're doing now is complicated, but that looks like it's a little more-
Very similar.
You have to add the primary center in.
You have to add the primary-
Cut that full day, right?
Yeah.
The first graders are moving to-
Yeah, the other thing that we want to share with you is a little bit of the program costs. So, you know, what we spent in 2015 just to move students around, but more importantly, what we spent on the capital cost to add the portables. So you can see it's, you know, there's some significant cost there for a one-year solution. And really, the big cost for us is really the portables. And these last seven or 14th portables that we're looking at in our district, it's probably the most challenging sites, most space, right, that we have that currently we're in review with our architect and may have to do quite a bit of mitigation. That's really where your extra cost is. The portables say, they're saying it's your construction mitigation cost that's going to cost.
And we don't offer half day kindergarten across the district except for at the two schools for the next year because?
No, we do.
We do?
We do.
No, only half day, I'm saying.
Well, I was going to say, that is another part of the equation.
No, can we do that?
I was going to say that we have not-
Except for the two schools where we're required to operate for one year.
We've not figured that option into any of this. If we said we're taking away full day K as a tuition base, et cetera, and we're just going to offer half day.
For one year.
For one year. We haven't figured that into this.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering how-
Just as the state requires it, we say, okay, nobody gets it.
For one year only.
Except at the two schools we have to require, Kenmore and-
I'm not advocating for it. I'm just saying if we have a classroom.
That's what I'm wondering. You save 1.1 million dollars. If you knew it was only one year, do you send them to get you through?
One of the things that we know we can do really well is we've been doing some hybrid model for the last three years. So we already have some, you know, sister schools that we've connected over the last three years with this. And we believe we can continue to do that really well and make that very successful for you.
Then we wouldn't have to move the first graders out though?
Well, you know, we may. I mean, that's going to be what we still have to continue to look at. It's going to look different even in the hybrid model than 2015 today, today's model. Part of it is because of our growth. We're just, our, our kindergarten classes are getting bigger when they move up. So remember, we've seen four of the largest kindergarten classes of the last four years.
We have eight second grades, I believe, or third grades, seven or eight in one grade classes. What is it, seven?
I think it's seven.
Seven, literally, that are all our area.
So what's significant about this and what Larry touched on a little bit, let's go to the next slide.
John has four.
The timeline. This is a significant thing that we need some guidance from the board around. And part of that is creating a plan of what we're going to implement, not only from a facilities perspective, but from an instructional perspective. And then of course, you know, everything else follows that. For us, what's significant from a facilities perspective is we were really close to hitting the mark on our portables last year of getting the portables and so. I mean, we were like this. Yeah, and part of that is, as Larry said, in the region, everybody's in the same boat as we are. And there's only so many vendors available to provide the portables and the construct, the, the construction to cite the portable. and the construct, the the construction to cite the portables, hook up the electric, do everything that you need to do to create the space by X date.
So before we've done this, what is there something, so what say we do this, we do community information in November, December, and then is there something that could happen, say, in January, February? That has us have to go back and say, oh, now we need a plan.
So let's go, let's go back to something. We, we, if you're asking our recommendation or what the impacts?
I know, what I guess what I'm asking is could, is there a potential?
Anything else?
Right, is there something else out there that could happen?
Well, there's a legislative session that that could make some change. I mean, they've already, they've already approved and funded full day kindergarten for next year. So I don't, I don't necessarily see the legislature going back on that. And you know, our recommendation would really necessarily be done that.
Impactive.
I suppose another thing that could happen is if, you know, we're, we're quite a ways out trying to do these enrollment projections, both on growth and the impacts of full day kindergarten. So if we've, you know, we've done the best we can, but if we've missed the mark somehow, you know, if we've missed the mark and we're short, that might be helpful. If we've missed the mark and we're over, and we're over, or we're we're under, you know, we've under projected, you know, the the sort of, we think we can get there, hybrid model for sixteen, fifteen, sixteen gets a little bit more challenge.
Um, how, where did we come in this year with our projections?
We were real close.
Yeah, kindergarten, when I came in.
Kindergarten enrollment was a little higher, but that was.
Like how much higher?
But we targeted that earlier. As soon as the registration started coming in.
How far higher?
What I think I hear Sandy saying though is.
Going to answer a question, just I my belief is it was about a hundred district wide higher, but we knew that by March.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Early. So what I'm interpreting, what Sandy is saying is that we choose a course of action now, we communicate to the community. What assurance do we have that we are not going to then have to accommodate, say, this?
And then center this, we just want to know that there's.
Or we can make sure.
The community, by the way, there's a big old asterisk next to this.
Well, I, yeah, and I I think the 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 potential would be if we underestimate, we have enrollment coming stronger, and we may need to disband. Our alternative, our option may be just to to disband more full day kindergarten.
Yeah, exactly.
Then you have to.
I was going to say, instead of being able to offer two, we can offer one, and we can offer four half days.
That parents want to be told whether they got the spot yet, so.
Well, we, we can certainly, we can certainly communicate that as we have in the past during the registration process. But some of this is, you know, because it's a lottery based, and we delayed the lottery this year, which aggravated a number of parents. And we delayed it because we were trying to sort through this this bump in enrollment we were seeing and rectify that with a classroom status.
And the primary center, that that always.
Yeah, that didn't help.
So kind of going in there, so. So I kind of, just to summarize it, since, you know, we've been at this for a long time, we don't see a realistic path towards full day kindergarten, even given the, you know, the best case scenario of double the cost of of a mitigation strategy for next year. We're still short, we still don't know where we might be able to cite enough portables to make that happen. We still don't, we don't think it's practical or reasonable to count on utilizing three available classrooms at East Ridge. When you'd be talking about probably Coconie would be the closest school to sending kids out to East Ridge. You know, so, so we don't see that as as practical. We we believe that that our best course of action, knowing that seventeen eighteen, we're in a totally different ballgame because we've opened North Creek, we've implemented grade reintegration, we've implemented boundary adjustments. We see that the the challenges seem pretty manageable in seventeen eighteen. That we defer full day kindergarten per year. We continue with the hybrid model, even that hybrid model would have us reducing some of the full day kindergarten offerings at a handful of schools to create the the capacity we need. That's, um, we we won't have been the first district to go down the road of of turning back or not utilizing state funding for full day kindergarten. Um, but that's, you know, it's clearly not going to sit well with with all folks. The other part of that, and I think it's a, it's a, it's an equity consideration, is even if we go with the hybrid model, there are some schools that aren't a part of the mitigation mix where we could move forward with full day kindergarten. They are our more affluent, less challenged school communities. So if we were to implement, accept state funding, implement full day kindergarten at those schools while we couldn't at less affluent, more demographically challenged schools, at the same time, we might be reducing the number of full day kindergarten sections that that we're able to offer, and we have to continue charging tuition for those because we can't accept state funding unless we offer full day kindergarten to whole school. I think there are some some equity considerations that need to be addressed around that.
Charging at one school and not charging at another, just, you know, just from the get go, it seems, besides the demographic implications, that just seems challenging.
But there will be some schools that will say, but you wouldn't necessarily have to charge tuition. So that's kind of the, um, that's kind of the piece I really, I really think is needs, needs. We need your thoughts and your your sentiments around that.
I would, I have no problem saying it's equitable access to kindergarten across the district. We can't charge in one school and not charge in another.
Well, and I mean, the money, remind me, as my greatest daughter, from the county standpoint, the the fees that we collect for full day kindergarten, does it offset any of this additional cost?
No, the fees.
Or goes towards instruction?
The fees pretty much offset the other half of the nature that the state doesn't offer.
But she was also, Kathleen was also saying it from an instructional standpoint, so I don't know that, I mean, that's a piece of it. We can't feasibly, we can very difficult to get all of our teachers of speed hiring all the teachers.
We have, well, that's why we're asking now, I mean, because if that's the way he wants us to go, then we've got to put a PD plan in place, we've got to get trainings in place, we have to get those schools that are going to be all day schools. Those staff members have to be trained, and we have to implement the full program, which isn't something we can do like that. We tried really hard to do it very quickly this year when it finally came through. And even with two schools, it was a real challenge to get everybody what they needed. You may recall, we opened those two schools late so that the parent conferences could happen before school started because that's the obligation, but in truth, they missed many days of instruction because we had to do that because of the requirements.
Would it be, okay, so we have two Title I schools, right, where it's at. Why then we have two schools that aren't Title I? Because wouldn't it help us if we could do part of it this year?
We talked, yeah, so we've talked about that, and so the kind of following the state model, if you couldn't do all and you could only do some, the next logical place to go would be to our other threes. We have five Title I schools, we'd be go to our other three Title I schools. Well, those schools happen to be Frank Love.
No, I meant going to the non Title I.
No, but.
Go to East Ridge and Bear Creek.
But then that's back to the equity argument of, so East Ridge and Bear Creek would get full day K and parents would pay nothing, while our title schools, which are in.
Oh, I see, okay.
See, so the demographic is they're less likely to be able to afford all day K, and you have to anyway. That's where that the equity thing would be.
The way the state has rolled it out has been tiered, it's been by order of need.
Yeah, and.
And that doesn't work for us either because our our three next media schools are Frank Love, Crystal Springs, and Woodmore. And Frank Love and Crystal Springs in particular are non starters for being able to roll out full day kindergarten in sixteen, seven. So.
So that whole, everybody does stand up there, it's just kind of dismiss, I mean, other than the fact that everyone will be upset.
Well, that's, that's an option.
That's an option.
But she, that wasn't up there, so.
Well, again, this this was purely fair, my facilities, this was not a facility.
That's because I'm thinking that's the most equitable.
Well, we could certainly run it, I think there's political fallout with any of these, right? And I think what we're all worried about is that next year is a year we'd like not to have a huge hubbub because the year after, we're going to move everybody and their, you know, brother around the district, et cetera, so.
I think we're going to have hubbub not doing full day because people are already, I mean, that is implemented. It's already out there from the legislature, but this is a done deal.
Well, and can I ask too, if I, this might be really hard, but can we, can we look at the overlay of adding, how many kids we've been adding yet another transition to? You know, if if we do the hybrid and then we switch a boundary and.
But if we do all half day, then they stay at the same school.
If it saves us in transition, we definitely don't have to worry about it.
Right?
We'd want to get Jeff into that to do discussions because.
Um, no, there would, even if you went all half day, some some schools would still turn.
Very few.
Well, no, you'd probably still have to move all of Crystal Springs, all of Coconie.
Yeah, the places that don't have kindergarten now would still.
Maybe some at Canyon Creek. Um, maybe some.
But they possibly could go to the primary center.
They would be going somewhere, right? So our north end schools, regardless of what plan, we believe you're in, will be short just based on the number of classrooms, the number of kids.
So, I mean, we can run those numbers and look at what does it look like if the district wide in sixteen, seventeen was everybody's half day, there's no full day option for one year.
One year.
Or two Title I schools.
What about the Title I?
The two that are there, Kenmore.
For the.
Except for them.
Yes, and so we.
Uh, but before we do that, I I would just ask that, are you, are you serious that you would consider that an option?
I.
I am.
Roughly that nets you eight classrooms, based on from the plan.
I thought.
I know, I thought it was.
Yeah. I mean, if it only gives.
Because I had already reduced so many full day K's at so many different schools.
Because essentially, two full days.
Yes, are in a classroom.
One half day, it's one half day classroom, it's two or one.
You take two, two, two classes to one.
Two half days.
So, yeah.
But I would, no, I'm reversing it, if you eliminate. So if you eliminate a full day, it would be ten, oh, two full days.
Well, I, I took out everything except for Wooden and Kenmore at all.
Again, I just.
It nets you about eight classrooms.
So I think for us, the direction, the direction we're looking at is, you know, you have this full day model that we know we won't be able to accomplish just based on utilizing anything, or we have to move some type to some hybrid model, whatever that option looks like.
I think the lottery just causes so much stress for people.
Now, the the other potential benefit, and again, I I think you have to sort of assess how serious you are about this. If we did look at a district wide half day, with the exception of Wooden and Kenmore, it may reduce our mitigation costs next year in portables and such that we then will not need the following year. So there's a.
It seems crazy to spend a one point eight million on portables.
Yeah, me too, I agree.
The one, the one piece that I have a chance to look at is what happens in eighteen with the class size reduction model.
Yeah.
I don't know what.
One crisis at a time here, thank you.
I've had all the worrying I could do on this subject.
I was going to ask, but I didn't want to.
Well, we, we, we.
Spark that light.
We've talked about that, and 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 then you're talking about needing several schools. I mean, if you're really looking at seventeen to one in in four grade levels, K one, two, three. So what we've talked about is we'll need to advocate, and we've already are having these conversations with our legislators, that it has to be flexible enough that we can say, okay, you've got, we've got a team of seven first grades at this school. Can we add an eighth teacher or maybe even a ninth teacher to that team who does remediation or who does science and art, or you you know, who's worked at at that grade level team, but isn't, doesn't necessarily have their own self-contained classroom? I mean, it's a, it's a different way of approaching class size reduction. Right, so I think that's our only path because we'd be talking about, you know, needing to build three, four, five schools.
Another hundred classrooms.
Yeah.
I don't predict that it's going to go into a self-contained classroom. I, we're not the only district that this initiative is.
No, it would flow already, yeah.
So I.
That's something that's written in the.
It is written as a ratio in the, it's both molecular and, I'm not molecular, but twenty two sixty one and.
I think there are really, there are really helpful ways we could utilize that resource. It would still involve a lot of PD, I mean, getting people to work together, those kinds of teams would be a different dynamic than what people are used, used to. But I think it can be a really effective model. And 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 I think it'd be really, really impactful. But the capital costs of trying to get to self-contained classrooms district wide at, you know, at a ratio of around seventeen is just.
Okay, so coming back to this crisis at the moment. So I'm liking Kimberly's idea, but I can't foresee what you think the fallout is going to be if we make this announcement.
I, I think if we have a fallout, we would.
Oh, I know, I know.
No, with the whole lottery system, last year, that was like.
I'm not disagreeing. I can predict the fallout of first graders moving, I can predict the fallout of this. What I can't predict is what's the fallout of an announcement of no.
So I, I think what you'll hear is a few things. One, I think you would hear, why can't we still have full day because our school can accommodate it and we're willing to pay for it? And I think, I think, I think generally that. Yes, yeah, so I, I think that would be, that would be probably the number one thing that you would hear. I think that full day kindergarten has been sort of institutionalized in our district. I think lots of families rely on it, not just for the benefits of a longer instructional day for their kids, but it has to do with work schedules, life, I mean, daycare, all of those things are tied up in that. So I I would just sort of predict that those would be the kinds of things that would surface.
And we can't do a quick, you know, a quick survey.
Let me just ask you, what do you think?
Is that one point eight million for portables, would we then, I know we're not giving them in the next year, but what about two, three years down the road?
We don't know.
Is that, are we growing at such a rate that?
Similar to what we've done in the past, we may just leave the portables there, use it as extra space at the school. And then once demographics change again, similar to what we've done over the last four years, we'll just move the portables where the needs are.
And remember, you know, part of the longer term plan, if if all goes according to plan, it's in twenty eighteen, there'll be another, another school of some sort on the Anderson site that'll open in twenty twenty. So, you know, in a fairly, in a three year period of time, opening another school that will provide additional capacity in the north end of the district, so.
That's fast.
So if we're talking about moving full day to half day across the board, how many full day classrooms roughly do we have?
I'm trying to calculate a bunch of kids.
So how about, how about.
We'll go back and.
So how about we, yeah, I don't, I don't want us to get.
Fifty kids, three hundred kids?
Yeah, I don't want us to start talking about. High, you know, I want to be able to really look at it carefully.
I think it's good to look at, yeah.
How much we go back and we look at what would, what would universal half day across the district look like? We can run it both from the classroom capacity as well as what does it do to the mitigation cost, the addition of portables we think we might need for sixteen, seventeen? And we'll try and get that.
What do you mean by mitigation cost? That's this number, that portable number?
Addition of portables and transportation.
Saving us transportation too.
Conceivably, if we have to do less moving around with students.
So potentially, we could be saving this money by going potentially half day, ramping up for the next year when everything's going to shift anyway, saving kids from switching too many schools, except for the few at Fernwood, Coconie, that that have to go somewhere anyway, that we're not switching many.
So I don't think it's.
Every school.
It's not those kids that are in transition.
It's a multiple transition, but we'll take that.
It's the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth.
I think she means though, what we had on the map. I was going to say, yeah, there is some.
If their boundaries adjust.
Yeah, there are kids that are going to Frank. Yeah, there are kids that are going to Frank Love now, they're gonna go back to Crystal Springs if they can have first grade at Crystal Springs, and then the boundary changes and then go back to Frank Love. So.
So we, we can look at that, I mean, I just, I, I think it's, it's, it had, it's not a place that we have discussed as, as a viable option, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm hearing the board indicating that you think it may be a viable option. So we can, we can certainly look at that. I, I think it's just, if that were the direct, and once we see the impact of that, if that were the direction we were to go, I think anticipating now what the arguments are gonna be in response to that and being, and being firm that, um, in the base of that, there will be some people who do not see themselves as connected to the growth issues in the north end of the district, being firm in your, in your conviction that no, that's the equitable thing to do for all for one year, until we're in a different place to do full day kindergarten.
I think that's where, that's where the argument feels, the ability to put your, to stand on it, is that it's one year. So it affects, it does affect children that are entering kindergarten this year, a thousand maybe, nine hundred?
It's right around two hundred.
Better off a year. Correct, correct, but half of them would take half day anyway, right?
Well, see, that's why it helps a lot to understand how much of them.
So.
Yeah.
We're, we're about sixty-some percent.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's more than that, full day is a desirable option.
So forty percent, and then knowing that it's only one year, that this is saving the district money, all this written all.
How, how about we model it?
I wanna know.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll work on something, try to get something by this week in the board briefing.
Just give us a idea.
Wait.
So, so give us a chance the next two days to see what this half day model would look like. We'll try to get something in the board briefing for Friday.
Okay.
Can you describe really quick what ASAP means to you guys?
As soon as possible.
Well, like, I know what the acronym means, but what is ASAP?
Well, I mean, Sandy said it, you know, um, this is October, what, thirteenth or whatever it is. Um, if no, November, December, we have to have community information.
So funny, and so that's me in it.
Okay, so along, just along that line, I.
I would agree.
Should I?
Yeah.
So I think it's great that we're pursuing this, but in the meantime, can we go back to the options and kind of continue?
Yeah, and then prioritize, prioritize those.
Yeah, prioritize those in case we say.
And, and I do think that I'll be doing the community, communicating with the community this year as much as we can ahead of time, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
It's very important.
So if I can just summarize, so I'm, and, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, so I wanna make sure that I'm capturing this correctly. The, the full day K for all sixteen, seventeen is, is off the table. We just, there's not a practical way to get there, even with spending millions of dollars, we would still end up short.
And we're gonna explain to the K and Y.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The, the default would be some level of hybrid as we currently have. However, would you like us to explore what a universal half day program would look like, sort of side by side with the hybrid? For sixteen, seventeen, and then looking at seventeen, eighteen as well, kind of what that, that picture looks like.
Seventeen, eighteen going to full day.
Seventeen, eighteen going to full day everywhere.
Yeah, not half, half.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, 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 right. And then, um, just for your information, for the, the PTSA connections luncheon on Monday, the three topics they've asked for are, one, just kind of a general overview of stuff, and I'll take care of that, full day kindergarten. So I'll, I can kind of outline this. And I've, I've tried to be really careful with everybody I've spoken with all year long about, you know, I know the state has said this, but this is a, this is a huge lift for us to be able to get there. Now, whether people hear that or not is a difference.
Well, I don't think it's you, I think it's what they've heard come down. I, I don't think at all it's been the district telling them this.
Well, I've been trying, I've been trying to moderate expectations, you know? And so we can sort of lay the groundwork for here are kind of what we're looking at. So if I can say with clarity, full day kindergarten does not fly on Monday.
Yeah.
And here are kind of the two options for the floor and, and the reasons why.
I think as soon as we get that. And then we can get some feedback.
And then get some feedbacks on that, and then we'll, we'll, we'll get the modeling done and kind of be able to lay those side by side and.
That might be interesting.
And then we'll need to, and then we'll need to figure out how to circle back. We may need to add a second study session or something at some point, given the timing of this, to circle back and kind of reach some closure to it.
And, and I mean, I have to say, it's confusing for, you know, all of us. I mean, when I'm looking, this neighboring district's getting it, this neighboring district's getting it, it's hard to under, you know? So it, it, it's not shocking to me that the community.
There's a, could, there's a pretty high awareness of the challenges that we face.
Yeah, but just that it's implementing, I thought it was, I thought it was mandatory that we did it. So I think that's where the confusion's coming in, that, yeah, we don't have the room, but it's mandatory. So does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think other people, other people think that, yes, yes, from legislature and other places, not from us.
The community does it as well. But Kim versus us is very confusing.
Yeah.
So we, we're visiting Wellington on Tuesday, would right after our Wellington visit be too soon to have another conversation or?
Well, some of us have, have tours scheduled in North Creek.
We could always reschedule.
So, um.
That's fine.
Well, our speech, this is important.
I just, I just happened to see that we were all together, so that's all, I'm just just sorting that out.
Are all of you going to be at Wellington on Tuesday?
Yes.
So that'd be question one, and I think question two would be if you are gonna be at Wellington, do you have the ability to extend your time by an hour or so?
We're sorting that out, cause it was another turn where it felt like.
Tuesday?
It's the twentieth, twentieth?
Yep, it's twenty.
I have my phone, I know I'm gonna forget this, I can write it down, I'm not gonna remember, so somebody there to text me.
I'll, I'll text it to you, please. Just, and this is.
Rely on two.
The nineteenth is next Monday.
Is it Tuesday?
Right, Tuesday.
The nineteenth is the connection origin.
Push, push it back a little bit.
I'll check with her.
Wellington is eight.
But we could always stop here.
Does it wrap up by eleven thirty?
Yeah, it's gonna be eight. Eight thirty, I think the presentation's.
It was eleven, eleven thirty. But I won't be there till.
We could probably even look at, he's got forty-five minutes on the end for discussions, we could probably even look at, push eleven fifteen.
Obe dot, Beano School.
Yeah.
Wooden's Beano.
It's out on the, I'm like, you're going to Cottage Lake and you take a month to that pizza place.
It's right next to Lea.
I definitely won't be there at eight thirty, just gonna have to get you on after school, since she's the latest elementary. I like, I'm not complaining.
Play that game.
I love that she studied.
So, Dawn, did you, is your, is your availability look like?
I, she hasn't answered yet.
Oh, okay, I'd like to.
When am I taking you to the airport?
Okay.
What day?
So if the, Dawn.
Even if you missed the visit, you could come to bed if you wasn't during that time.
Unless I, that's for.
That's.
The airport, right, but I, yeah, I bet I can do it.
Okay, so.
But you gotta remind me though, cause I just need all of you to forget.
Okay, I'm putting it in here.
And send me an, an invite to it, do you know what I'm saying, put in your calendar.
So we'll commit to getting you guys the, um, half day kindergarten model out this week. And then we'll work on, that will include a summary, kind of lining out your hybrid model versus your half day K model with the impacts to two thousand and seventeen. Probably that page only in legal science.
Okay, two slides.
Okay. So what we'll need to do then is, um, I'll ask Bill to, um, we'll cut the end part short by fifteen minutes. So I'll ask Bill to see if he can find us a room with a presentation station.
They have a good conference.
At Wellington, and we'll advertise a special meeting for a study session at eleven fifteen, uh, on Tuesday the twentieth. And, uh, we'll have the follow-up request here by then.
Okay.
You good?
All right, perfect.
In the meantime, if you have any questions.
Yeah.